Jesus Christ.
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, any questions on the agenda? If not, make a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any conflicts of interest on the agenda? No? Okay, since there's no one here tonight, we don't have any reason to go into public comment for the night. So we'll move through that and move on to item number six, which is a discussion, public hearing and decision. Has anybody called into this?
Not yet.
Oh, they don't have, oh yeah, they don't.
They're just kind of.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, so the first item that we'd like to discuss this evening is it's a public hearing, as you stated, for subdivision service agreement amendment. We discussed it at the work session and Scott drafted the language, tried to pull together the ideas that we had discussed and was proposing and recommends approval of the amendments that are in here. I think we sent it out to all the utility companies, several developers, main developers in the county that have visited similar. And so we've.
Would you mind having the light switch? Would you mind doing?
Oh, okay. But we tried to get those comments and those, you know, anybody who might be handling it or might have an interest in what this says. And we've heard, we didn't hear anything back from any of the utility. Well, Mountain Green Sewer District gave us some comments and then also Wasatch Peaks engineer reviewed it. We just had one comment. So we've incorporated those into tonight's draft. I'll just show you. Well, I'll just tie it in and talk about the whole thing. So as we discussed at our last meeting, we added these definitions of letter of intent, will serve and service provider. And then so if you were to concept plan submission, you need a statement addressing the property is located within the water and sewer district well and subject or well and subject, water sewer or well and subject. And it has those services. It needs to document their ability to service a proposed development, availability and location of the utilities, whatever they may be, and it's in the vicinity and that the type of proposed system and facilities would be servicing them. Water's easy, you want to pick on, yes, we have the water lines, yes, we can do it. And that's our plan is to do it. But that's just concept. So yeah, we're planning to do it, it's all they're saying. At preliminary, they actually give us a letter that says we will serve the property. And we've added instead of the service agreement, because we all say we'll serve letter anyway. And then we added the three criteria, that their system has the capacity to serve the proposed development. And then just for tonight's version, we added and document the available amounts of the relevant utility. So we want to know that yes, you can, you have the capacity and tell us how much capacity. We want to get a little bit of detail in there so that we can verify that. And then any conditions required to service the subdivision so that we can incorporate that into our discussion as well. Is it a realistic, you know, proposal? And then such letters shall indicate the terms and conditions of the services and the impact to the company's facilities. So after they serve, they'll still have the ability to do it. Then in the final plat, we just wanted to clarify, all this, at preliminary plat, they would put in all their lines and utilities. And when they sign the final plat, they should have already verified that those services are functioning and working. And that's why they're signing the plat. But we added the line of just a signature on the plat by the service provider shall be a commitment to provide the respective service. At that point, the county's out of it, the utility is saying, we will service this area. So the homeowner, or I say homeowner, but so that the future lot owner knows that that service is there. And that the utility company, whatever company it is, has accepted that responsibility. How they get to that point, that's what the other letters are for and that's between the developer and the utility provider. But once they sign that plat, then they are taking responsibility for it. And then in eight twelve forty-six, we talked about utilities and fire suppression. And we just wanted to add that no use shall be permitted unless it is shown that there is an adequate supply. And that's where we had another comment to clarify, as per the international fire code, of immediate access to water or fire protection as determined by the fire marshal. Just to add, again, it's all just, we kind of have it all there. We're trying to make with this ordinance amendment, we're trying to make it all really clear. So Scott feels like this will help, help us as we go through the development process and do our approval. But any questions with that?
I do. I'll ask a few questions first. The problem statement for this is that the bar was a little bit low and or ambiguous at concept, I think. So did we fix that with the language for concept is my only question? That says eight two one on page five oh thirty, eight two one says letter of intent. It says the second sentence there, the service provider can provide conditions of service. So are we just strengthening the language to encourage them to do that? Because we're not requiring them to show capacity at concept.
Well, this helps both, both sides of the equation, so to speak. Because it still can have conditions, there's still work that has to be done at concept. You know, again, I'll pick on water lines. The water line's not in, ready to service the lot. No, we're just a concept. And we, but it can be a condition, but that's got to happen. They're not going to do the next letter until they feel better about that. And they certainly shouldn't sign the plat, which is when it's transitioned from a development to individual owners without it being done. And so this is just at concept, yes, we can do it and there may be conditions. And we want that, I think we ought to keep that in there the way it is. Because then the public also knows, the people who aren't doing development every day see, oh, okay, at concept, they can have conditions. And now we all know that they can, they're committing to it, but there's conditions and there's still work to be done.
Okay.
Both were there.
And it is shored up pretty good at preliminary, I think, with that language.
And then preliminary really takes.
On page six. Four A, I think that language kind of shores it up a little bit. And I'm just thinking in the past, I'm trying to mentally think through different applications we've had. So questions for water, if this was in place, this should eliminate it, not will, but it should.
The only problem you got with concept, and that's where I think we struggle, and that everybody comes in and in their mind, everything should be, they do have it almost like a final, that's what we fight with. Where concept is just saying that, yeah, you have the opportunity. And so it's an ongoing battle. I don't know if you'll ever fix it until you actually make it be official concept.
It's definitely beefing it up at preliminary. I mean, this is, this really, I think this fixes preliminary.
That means where the problem was.
Yeah. So I think it raises the bar from where we were, for sure. A little more specific. That's my only comment. Otherwise, I think it solves the problem or somewhat mitigates the problem. Any other questions? No? Do you guys want to go into public hearing? And then we'll have some more discussion? Motion to go into public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody? Motion to go out of public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any other discussion on this? No? Okay. Anybody want to make a decision or a motion rather?
I'll do it.
It's your night, man.
Hey, here we go. Treadlin, here we go.
Hi, Mr. Chair. A motion for recommendation of approval. I move to recommend the approval of the county council to amend the Morgan County Code, section eight dash one two, as presented in the July ninth, twenty twenty.
Application.
Application, there we go. Staff report based on the following findings. No findings.
Yeah. Yeah, that you would restate what staff put up on the.
Oh, there we go.
Correction to.
Perfect, yeah, that we will take the findings that you will, what staff has recommended on the application. Does that work?
It's not on application, not this one here, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so no put application.
On the report?
Yeah, yeah, the updated comments from staff on the. That's presented tonight, something like that. You want to read back what you have for us?
Make me sound good.
Just so we're clear.
Uh, just the findings, the updated notes on the.
On that dated staff report?
I had dated staff report.
Something like that.
Yeah.
Second.
Okay, so we have motion to forward a positive, no, motion for recommending approval with the addition of the staff changes. We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, item number seven.
So last time we talked about amending the commercial district.
Oh, yes, we did.
So now I've taken all of your notes and kind of came up with a final draft of what we would like to change. So as you can see, we are recommending to take away the commercial buffer district, the general commercial district and the business park district. Because they're so similar to the neighborhood commercial district and the commercial shopping district. And then we are keeping the Mountain Green Commercial district for the area near the airport on West Cottonwood Commercial Street. So that all of those uses can be reformed. But so that we can still keep out different, like more manufacturers and more manufacturing, won't remove to that area. And then Peterson Commercial will be in the area where the current engine shop is located. And that will make his machine shop reform as well. And so if you look at all of the different uses, I've also added a few. And then I looked at all the definitions, I looked up all the definitions on the NICS. And there are a lot that were very similar. And so I kind of put them all in the same category. But before I put them in the same category, I made sure that we had the same allowances for each use. So I mean, they were all the same across the board. So I just put them all in one category. Kind of make the table a little better. Yeah, so if you just kind of want to look at the table, if you have any questions, we appreciate your recommendations on any changes that you see.
So I think you have some to be right.
I have a few.
I think it's a step, in my opinion, it's a step in the right direction for finishing up a project we started many years ago. I think it makes sense to keep the Mountain Green Commercial and the Peterson Commercial for much discussion. I think what you did with the table is very comprehensive and I think you caught a lot of things that in our exhaustion last time, we may have overlooked when we were combining things down. So thank you for that.
Everything I changed is in bold.
Okay. I think we do have some recommendations, but ultimately for the planning commission, we're going to have to take this to public hearing, obviously. And then we're really going to have to look through this individually before the next public hearing just to make sure that it makes sense. Just as a reminder, I know we always do that, but I think this is the last step to getting this project completed. Your comments?
And I've talked with Haley, the definition of the retail bakery and commercial bakery, I would prefer if it's swapped. According to the NICS, whatever, the commercial bakery is like a little walk-in bakery that you go and buy stuff, but a retail bakery is the big Wonder Bread. And to me, that's backwards. If someone were to see a retail bakery, I would think you'd go in and you would buy your doughnut over the counter and they would, they could, they bake them there, but you would buy where the commercial would be more manufacturing. So I would, I'd like to kind of swap that around.
So NICS is kind of ambiguous, the way that it.
Well, it's not ambiguous.
It just makes sense.
It just, it says commercial is your Dunkin' Donuts.
Where?
And your, you know, large factory is retail. And I don't know why they do that, but.
Oh. So why are you looking at the switch?
I mean, everything in there is thought out, but.
If someone were to look at the table, if you see retail bakery, it needs to make sense. That it's a retail bakery, not a big commercial manufacturing bakery.
I think it was lost. Well, none of this is linked to NICS.
So like the retail bakeries is only allowed in a few of the places.
Right.
Or you could also look at.
But the uses would follow the swap.
You know.
You'd swap the, where the.
So what you want is put retail bakeries over here, just change the name, but leave the definition on with it.
Okay, took me a minute. Yeah, it's kind of minor, but.
And then the new commercial bakery, I don't know if we want big commercial bakeries in the TPC zone. That's a technical professional campus. That's more, I see the big commercial, I see it more manufacturing, maybe on.
Yeah.
But don't we have a lot of manufacturing in the TPC?
More in the Mountain Green one.
TPC is more.
More office.
Yeah.
Yeah. Administrative.
We can get into that more, probably tune into the public hearing, but yeah.
Well, we can find it in the public hearing, but we would like to advertise it and have those as the.
Right.
You know you want to switch it today, let's switch it.
Yeah, I.
And maybe you want to switch it back to the public hearing, but.
I agree, I think it's more of a Mountain Green Commercial type thing. Even though, as long as we're headed towards getting this thing right, TPC was really our attempt at trying to design a tech industry kind of thing.
Yeah.
Medical, office space, things like that.
So you wouldn't want to allow the small bakeries?
The small ones? Well, I don't know. Yeah, I guess you have a small bakery by businesses so they can run in and.
What's our definition for TPC?
Right now, Browning.
Browning. Technical professional campus.
It was.
Not really commercial.
It was supposed to be that one, nutraceutical.
Right.
Area.
I worked in Denver for years and they have the, Cherry Creek had a very large technical professional. There were office buildings, it was really just a business oriented place of more suburban in nature. But that's what I think of, it's a technical professional campus. There's all sorts of office buildings and all that. But then there's areas of, you know, smallness of bakery, there's sandwich shops, there's things like that.
In the same place, same area?
Well, yeah, at certain points, so.
Yep.
With that kind of, if you're talking, that's not really a commercial bakery what you're talking about. You're talking more like the coffee shop or deli, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Versus cooking on.
We've already switched that, okay.
Yeah. So are we saying we could have small places like that?
I think so, where they could have lunch.
To disregard?
I guess.
We had discussion, that's why we're here.
So the big three factors would not be allowed in the technical professional campus, is what I'm hearing you say.
The big.
Correct.
The big one.
But the retail.
But a Dunkin' Donut, yes.
The smaller one, the mom and pop, would be allowed in technical professional campus.
Tim Hortons. So long as they didn't make cookies and crackers.
Yeah.
We might want to take that, I thought that was as dull. We're good with distilleries, but absolutely no cookies and crackers. Drawing one.
Yeah, is that going to be cleaned up, the cookies and crackers? I have a question on caterers. You don't have it in the Mountain Green or Peterson. And I thought to have a caterer, probably an appropriate business in those areas too? Or what are we thinking?
Can't just be an industrial kitchen, right?
Yeah, I mean, they're not.
Do you want, do you want caterers to be a conditional use or just permitted? Why conditional use?
I, I'm fine with permitted, don't we permit restaurants and?
At the business permit stage, you've got to go through making sure there's a grease trap.
Well, restaurants, which is, but the same, same use is required for a caterer. Caterer, in my understanding, is has to have access to a full-service kitchen.
Right.
I also included, if you read the definition, included in caterers is event places.
So those two are merged together?
Bankwell halls.
Bankwell halls, okay.
The reason we're even thinking about this is because we had Mountain Green Commercial. We had, what's the name of the maple syrup manufacturer that's there?
Slapjack? Slapjack?
Slapjack, I think. Anyway, when they went into the, it's kind of a caterer, I mean, they're manufacturing syrup, but they needed grease traps and some other things installed. And it was a conditional use permit. And if I remember right, it wouldn't have gotten caught at the permitting process. And they actually had to, it was Mountain Green Sewer that actually caught it during their routine inspection or something like that, I forget what it was, but we want to prevent that kind of stuff from happening. It's mostly just grease traps. If so, if somebody moves into a commercial area and they're producing something that could go into the sewer, typically if it switches from an industrial to a food use, there are some changes.
But part of that too goes back to code with the building or whatever that takes care of that. It should.
Yeah.
They can't, they have to have a, some type of a tank or something that catches that on the premises, I think.
Well, the building code would definitely cover it when they're looking at the building plans. But what I'm hearing you say is because we're, because of Morgan, so has our separate little districts doing the services, their better notice would be a conditional use, it's just a C one, so it's not, it's like this much more work.
It would provide better protection for basically just the sewer.
Just the sewer.
But the only thing is you'd have to make sure and have it so that you caught it to get to the planning commission to see over there because.
Well, C one would be stat.
And C one on the checklist puts Mountain Green Sewer on the routing of it. I think that's, so C one is not that complicated.
It just raises it up a notch so that it shows to more people.
It forces them to that checklist that you have.
Well, it's just, it's starting it out quicker. It's starting it quicker in the process because when they actually go to build it with the commercial, they have those things that they have to comply with. And that is one of the things is a place to catch the grease that it can't go into.
What we were saying before is they, because they weren't building, they were moving in, they were repurposing something else. They weren't really doing any modifications, they just kind of moved it in and got a business license. It was at the C one level that was caught, I think.
It actually might help the person coming in to have that elevated a little more scrutiny early on so that it doesn't come up as not a nice.
Well, and something like that though, maybe needs to move a little bit further too to where even the building inspector is involved or something to make sure that that's taken care of.
Well, they still do that part of it.
Yeah, but I mean, like Gary's saying, they're coming in, they're not pulling any permit, nobody knows about it.
Just a business license, basically, essentially.
Yeah, you get a business license, it's different than having a building.
But because that was C one, actually, I think it may have been C two, because it came to us.
It came to us.
Yeah. But because of that, that's what caused, that's what caught that. And that's one of the things I remember. Simple, but I think that kind of explains the difference between why it should be C one or C two. Probably C one is fine. What else?
And then the drinking places, I'd still like to have it just a distillery or brewery and not a bar or tavern.
So what, what page?
We're.
It's on the first.
Ten, page ten of thirty, it's back on the first of this.
Top of the table, first table.
Distillery brewery.
So what's your recommendation here?
Well, don't have bars, lounges and taverns. Just call it distilleries or breweries, somehow just leave it at that.
So what do you do about Stoddard Inn and the Hitching Post?
Well, Hitching Post is, it's different, I mean, Stoddard Inn is.
That's right.
Nonconforming, it's not even, it's in a residential zone.
Well, I agree, but I mean, you got bars and most of them.
Yeah, I think that's enough.
I think bars should be allowed, allowed somewhere because that's discriminatory for someone who walks open bar.
I'm just thinking, where the commercial districts are, it's Mountain Greens, so where.
I'm curious to know, I noticed you put the bold to C one, what was it before Haley? On the drinking establishments?
I want to say it was permitted.
We want a bar.
Like town center makes sense. I mean.
Industrial zone.
Girlie concrete.
Croydon could use a bar.
Concrete, SOBs.
There you go.
Bars. If you don't want it, send it to Croydon. So.
Well, can you differentiate bar then from, because distillery and brewery, I'd want them in more places. If we're going to have bars, it's going to be, I don't know where, but.
I agree with her. We had an opportunity for a distillery and it wasn't, it just didn't work out because it wasn't permitted in that zone. It was a dead zone at one point.
Yeah.
And it would have been an appropriate use in a commercial zone. It would have brought some good business in and stuff. But do we want a bar in the same place, next to the Tim Hortons or whatever? You know what I mean? See, let's say you've got a technical professional campus and you've got folks working during the day or whatever. Town center would probably be an appropriate place, they could, you know, walk across the street. That would be my logic. Whereas the brewery could probably be operating in that area, but the actual drinking establishment might be in them. In the more customer oriented places, so Town Center for sure.
What do you, what do you define for brewery again?
A distillery, a, a place that doesn't serve alcohol, they're just making it.
But that, that serving food.
Well, they, you, I think you can.
That distillery was going to serve it?
Serve it, I mean, it's very controlled.
Yeah, I think there was a potential for it, but I think at the time there was no state licenses or something like that.
There was something with it.
Yeah, they couldn't get their, the, the right license from the ABC. Yeah, the ABC regulates and they couldn't, I think there was no available license, but I, I think you can drink on drugs.
Well, there was something to do with it because that was the bigger issue with being able to drink or whatever next to that.
The childcare.
Childcare that was right there.
Oh, yeah, that was another part of it.
So it, there was something to do with where they could consume the alcohol on the place.
I remember that part, I remember the storage of the alcohol being dangerous or considered dangerous.
Probably more thought needs to be on that, Will.
Yeah, and we'll have a public hearing and have more discussion on that. I do, I, I'd like the idea of having the two apart, but I don't know that. I don't know that they really belong apart, are they, are they the same thing?
They're just more upscale.
That's where I was trying to go, is Roosters and Ogden.
Yeah, that's a brewery.
That's a brewery.
And a restaurant. So that, that to me fits in the full service restaurant. They serve food and they serve alcohol.
Right, and I agree on that.
So that's a full service restaurant, that's how that's addressed.
With alcohol.
What you're talking about is more of a distillery brewery with some food, which is kind of maybe another level.
More of the commercial production, like commercial production of alcohol, so.
I watched you pretty well, if you're going to have someplace where they're going to drink, they're, they're going to serve food too.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Maybe we can fine tune the definition, look up some definitions for those. And then know where we want to go.
We will get public on that time. Better, better we have a handle on it beforehand, I think. It's kind of hard to draw the line between the, the Dewdrop Inn and Layton versus Roosters.
Yep.
Or.
Or Rooster.
Yeah. Or five, you were there. Five wives. It's a what?
Dewdrop Inn is very, you don't notice it from the road.
No, you have to notice there.
You don't notice there.
It's a lounge.
It is a lounge, yeah.
Is it dank? It's a, yeah, it's unique. Anyway, it's more discussion on that. We're just trying to clarify what it is, what it is we're looking for in those districts. I thought you were supposed to leave. Oh, well, we can beat that.
And then I went to hotels are allowed in the Peterson Commercial and Mountain Green Commercial. I don't know if hotels are, in Mountain Green Commercial especially, how if you.
What's the zone? The Johnson property that was, that, those additional acres that was brought in?
It's under a development agreement. It was the.
CH or something.
What's the future land use?
It was the old zoning.
Central, it was a central town.
Central district.
Yeah, it was a CD.
Yeah, central.
Commercial district.
Commercial, most central.
Was it commercial district?
Central district or something.
Central, it was a CD.
Yeah.
So when they brought the extra acreage in, they brought them to.
They haven't brought it in yet.
Oh, okay.
They were going to put the apartments there, the multifamily.
I thought there was Taco Hotel in that area.
There is, there is for that area already in, in the development agreement, there's a hotel.
For that, what do we have, the future land use?
Town Center.
Town Center.
So that.
Central Development District Zone.
That's it, Central Development. Does it belong in TPC?
That, that's.
Where, where, where does it not belong?
I don't think it belongs in the Peterson or Mountain Green one.
Yeah.
I'd take those out.
It definitely counts center. But why are hotels only C1 on those other commercial zones?
Why would they be anything other than permitted?
Well, you have it as C3 in the Town Center, that's.
Correct that. Why would a hotel need to go to the county council in a commercial zone?
I'm just, it's there, I don't.
What's your recommendation?
Permitted or C1s?
So you're recommending it permitted in Town Center? Is that what I'm hearing?
I, I would.
And?
But then make it a C1 though, not just permitted, right? Or would you put it permitted?
I'd put it permitted in commercial highway.
All of them?
Maybe not, leave it as C1 in TPC. This man, but commercial shopping, commercial highway, Town Center. What else do you want on the top? It still meet the design requirements which would mitigate their impact, there's still a height limit which mitigates that impact. What, what conditions would you put on a hotel in addition to those?
Well, that's true.
Yeah, because they already have them on them.
You could, arguably, you could say that about anything.
They already have parkings. You'd already have a landscaping plan.
Yeah. And if it goes into Town Center, it's under, it would be under a development agreement and the height restriction could be.
It's under a development agreement on top of it, that's exactly that.
So you're advocating for permitted in all but commercial, uh, Mountain Green and Peterson?
Well, I thought Mountain Green and Peterson, we were removing them.
Removing it.
Not permitted.
And then permitted and everything else?
permitted in Town Center, commercial shopping and CH.
C1 in TPC, you said?
C1 in TPC, it's like, eh, maybe we don't have that, but might be okay.
C1 is permitted, right? Okay. We'll see how, see how it rolls out of public hearing, what's, uh, what's next?
What else I have, oh, then. The drive-in theaters. I've, I mean, it's okay in the commercial zones, but that's just so much land I don't.
Six months ago, I would have totally agreed with you, but today, that's the only place you can go see them?
Well, that's true, that's true.
I mean, it is flipped. Those were dead and dying.
You couldn't depict that.
Oh.
Right?
Okay. I did miss one, the, the laboratories up above under Educational Services, Medical and Dental. We do have a dental lab in the Mountain Green Commercial now, I believe. Is, I, I, I thought he was still there, but I'm not.
Yeah, down there by.
Blackjack, whatever, and the crematorium.
It's just, he's manufacturing.
Uh-huh, he makes crowns and stuff and that, I guess that's considered a dental lab. I thought, so we need to allow it there.
Lance, I'm curious to know on the chemical and plastics, why that is completely dissolved.
Really able to go in, in Mountain Green and Peterson, really.
It's on page 14 on the bottom.
It is a very like.
Page 14. They just, there's nothing there at all, it looks like it's completely outlawed, I was just curious why.
So why list it?
No, I'm not, I'm saying what's wrong with it, why would we not permit it? There's, is there a reason why we would not permit someone to manufacture?
Make it a C2 in the industrial zones.
That would work for me, I, I don't know why we would outlaw that, is there?
Not sure about the black products that we just talked about.
Oh, yeah, I hadn't thought about that, that's probably what. I just don't know enough about it, I guess.
Probably a lot of different processes too, we'd have to look at each, you know, what's your waste product going to be and hazardous material, et cetera.
Well, so the question is, is it something you would permit if we could put the right conditions to control?
I like it the way it is.
Okay?
C2.
Not to have any?
No, he, he doesn't want to allow.
He, I think, I think when you start getting into the chemicals and the plastics, it's going to open a door. It's going to be the Pandora's box of, okay, so this is a completely different plastic than this one. And if they're switching processes in the middle and everything else, it's, I mean, are we, if you do let it in and as they're switching processes and whatnot, are we going to catch that all of a sudden they do have hazardous materials, hazardous waste, et cetera?
You got the same thing with petroleum products, so that's probably a good idea.
So we're talking DuPonts, you know, that kind of thing where they're actually making.
You know, it could be smaller too, it could be, you know, pretty small, but I, I think. As far as technical expertise on our staff, I don't know that we would have enough technical expertise to say this isn't a hazard to the community. And, or if they see processes change that we still don't have the technical expertise to say this is fine, this isn't fine in, in the location that we're talking about.
And, and if a manufacturer came along, the county did want to entertain, we can have that code. And address it that way.
You're right, we could.
So if it, if it's critical, it's your passing, so. This would be the conservative vote.
And that's chemical and plastics manufacturing, right?
And petroleum. Because I think most, most plastics are still made of petroleum, aren't they?
So what's your recommendation?
Just leave it them all.
Right now, they're not permitted.
They're not, yeah. So we can even strike them from the table?
And I was going to say, I kind of like having them listed there though, just to remove any doubt. We thought about it and we chose to do this.
Okay.
As opposed to, oh, well, we, we.
Can I have a question?
Yeah, we did, and we said we don't want.
What did Brent Bateman always tell us, if, if your code doesn't specifically say you can't do it?
No, it, it's the opposite, it's not listed as a permitted use, you can't do it.
Going codes have traditionally been permissive, we list what's permitted, you can't possibly list everything that's not permitted.
Right.
So leaving that on there, isn't that kind of contrary to that?
It is a little bit, but I like, as I said, I think it says, we thought about it and we're leaving it on here just to. Just in case there's any questions. It's significant enough issues that. But if you want to get off.
And I had a question about paper product manufacturing, while we're in manufacturing. And is that like making paper goods, paper plates and stuff? The light, light manufacturing shouldn't be allowed to make paper products.
This is what we stated and discussed in 2017 and slanted on this.
I, because I think we're talking about making paper, if you're making paper, you don't want it because it smells, it's Tacoma. But paper products, I don't think has an odor.
That was one of those things, we went through the codes on that one.
Yeah, is that?
So I, I would just refer to what we've done, because we talked about that one.
I remember talking about paper, making paper, we didn't want it anywhere.
Well, in Croydon.
Well, no, not even in Croydon, making paper's not even on, so.
We made, we made it C2, that's what I, that's why I was saying that.
And the next one is pharmaceutical manufacturing, do we want to allow that in light manufacturing?
Same, same discussion, I think we had this discussion two years ago.
We just want to leave it in industrial, leave it in Croydon.
To what Jane is saying, we discussed this mobile west.
We did, we spent hours going over those.
That was original and then we, then we gave up.
But we did.
It was TP, wasn't it TPC?
Yeah, TPC was supposed to do pharmaceuticals.
I, I got one though, just looking at it, that I think is kind of stupid. I mean, I'm looking here at stables and horse racing, it's permitted in TPC?
Yeah.
Why wouldn't you permit it in a bunch of places? You know, like industrial or light manufacturing or whatever if they wanted to have a racetrack? They're not going to put stables without having a racetrack.
The reason I would say not to put it in the light manufacturing or industrial is because we have limited areas for those types of uses. And to take up that, I'm going to call it scarce land and put it into something like a horse track that now we've lost a potential really good commercial revenue in a place that we said we wanted.
The only thing I would say though is then you put it as a C3.
To Gary's point earlier, if you make it conditional, that's essentially permitted, but you can mitigate it. And a lot, and I, and this is coming from, a lot of communities have allowed, and what, what usually happens a lot is the light manufacturing gets one office building and then another office building. And now you've got office buildings, which is not the same thing, and you don't have room for places to do manufacturing, which is, provides jobs and tax space.
So just, just thinking, and I don't know the numbers, but, but Weaver County Fairgrounds, how does that play out? For them with having their racetrack down there?
Because it's in.
Because.
It's not a commercial zone, I don't think so.
Or the Fairgrounds, is it? But it, but my, my point is, is somewhere, you know, especially like this year, that has been one of the only places around where the horse races could actually go on was Weaver County. A lot of their places, it was shut right down. And so I would think that maybe they might have done okay. You know, being able to have it, I, I don't foresee having a racetrack here in Morgan.
But it could be in the agricultural zones rather than.
I, I just, I would go back to, I wouldn't want to take up manufacturing and industrial land to do that.
I, and I agree, it just seems like with the definition for TPC that the racetrack don't fit in there.
Yeah. Right, and I agree on that one.
That's where I was struggling, I, I mean, I don't.
What page are you on?
It's 13.
13. Which was the one we was talking a minute ago about TPC and we didn't like it?
Yeah.
The commercial bakeries or something, or whatever it was? And then you're going to put a racetrack in there with horses? In what?
The Scotsman Center?
The Scotsman Center is the.
That's.
But it's a stables.
That's not in TPC, yeah.
It's either that or the Mountain Green Commercial.
It's a stable. And that's probably why that's there.
Do we look at the stables and take out horse racing, should we just delete horse racing?
Yes.
You, you can leave, I don't really care, it doesn't, I just was asking.
Horse stables, I don't know, I mean, equestrian pursuits?
My, my thinking is if you're going to have stables, there are the racetracks, the cleaner part.
Well, yeah, that's true.
You know, I, I wouldn't get rid of your racetrack if you're going to let the stables stay.
Just say equestrian centers, I mean, or something like that.
If there are racetracks.
Curse this suggestion?
The racetracks are generally pretty clean and nice.
Talk about taking a lot of space in your residential, you have recreational vehicle park in light manufacturing. And I could say maybe not appropriate to have recreational vehicle park in manufacturing zone.
What page is that on, Dave?
That's on page 17. For that same reason, it just takes up. Valuable food.
Yeah. So where does it belong?
She has a commercial highway.
Refresh, refresh my memory, the commercial highway is the one, um, the, the only place we have is right next to Nutraceutical, right?
Yeah.
Or Heinz's commercial highway.
Heinz's isn't?
No, I don't think it is.
It's a commercial zone, I can't remember.
The only commercial's only got Peterson's, the.
No, Heinz is a commercial zone in the storage sheds. Is it general commercial or what is it?
Commercial highway.
Commercial highway.
Commercial highway.
So is Fred Camp's house in commercial highway too?
Yep, I think Brent does this.
A little sliver of commercial highway here.
Hers is close.
Across from the waters on Old Highway.
I don't, I don't think it belongs in commercial highway.
Oh, well, in the bed, whatever. We got a couple of those spots in Commercial Highway.
Yeah.
It probably belongs in A20. I, go back to your argument for space. You know, we have, we have limited, limited space.
The other thing is, is you think some of the stuff that people ever really do?
They could, Commercial Highway, they're, that's under scrutiny right now, and I know that, I don't think they have plans for that, but to me, putting, when I look at that zone right there, Commercial Highway, I don't think an RV park belongs there.
To Shane's point, I think it lands too valuable to be used this way, in this type of zones. In the Mountain Green area and all that. But it might be a little use that fits nicely in somewhere too, so.
Well, what, what is actually a recreational vehicle park?
It's campground.
Campground.
Like a KWA.
Like a KWA.
Is it, you sure, is that what it says?
Yeah. But, but it could also be.
Cuz I, I mean, I was just struggling thinking we're gonna put some type of campground in our commercial district. I don't, I think there's a different definition for it. That's why I go, this, this is what I struggle with this whole thing, is we spent hours and hours, and we went through all the definitions as we decided what they were.
And I didn't change anything on that one, I just kept the use as how we have it.
Yeah, I mean, I just.
We're auto, we're auto correcting ourselves here on this one, I think, it's not you. I don't think they belong, that's my opinion.
How hard to agree?
When I, when I look at other places around here, like Hennefer has one, um, if you go past.
Cold Hill has one.
Yeah, they're, 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 it's someone's field. Um, but to put, I don't know, does a KWA belong in the middle of Mountain Green?
No.
It might be feasible if like, uh, Snow Basin expanded summer services, or you got more of a trail system, but I think that's so far out in the future, we're gonna come back to this anyway.
Yeah. Anyway, that's. Did someone take notes?
Okay, can I ask you a quick question? And go back to that map, it kinda sparked my interest, it's just from my own information. I noticed that the zones extended beyond the freeway. Is that, is that right? Is that, so?
No, it's not right. Your roads are not naturally zoned, so.
But the, the area, that's Triple Land on the other side, on the south, it's not?
That's all the, you got right away.
Okay, all right, thank you.
We, we call it the right away.
Okay, I, I just was curious.
It's a lot of extra work to take it out and hack it, so.
What else? We're on page seventeen, anything on eighteen?
Well, the next one's nineteen, I don't know, a bus terminal or station in Peterson? I guess, I, I.
It's true.
A, a tram.
Tunnel.
A gondola. And then maybe on churches on that page, be allowed in Peterson.
Bus stop in Mountain Green, on a bus terminal.
What?
Can't even get a bus stop.
I can't get a bus, yeah, we can't get a ski bus.
What was that?
The churches, maybe have it allowed in Peterson, commercial?
Well, if you're gonna have it for Mountain Green, you ought to do it for Peterson and keep it the same.
With the bus?
C2?
No, C2.
Yeah.
Cuz it's, for Mountain Green, it's a C2.
Yeah.
Do you think churches should be C2?
I, I thought they're permitted. They should be permitted.
I've never seen a church get turned down for any type of permit.
It should be permitted, yeah.
So change the TPC and the MG to permitted?
Everything permitted, yeah.
On a church?
It's hard to say no to a condition to use, then you throw it back, but as a church? It's really hard to say.
Yeah, what do you get to mitigate?
I mean, it wouldn't be against the standards anyway.
But they all tend, they all tend to hang out at the same day, not many, not many other people are doing things, so parking normally isn't an issue. What's the comprehensive healthcare facility versus a healthcare facility?
I have no idea.
Like, small clinics, I guess?
Yes, yes, yeah. Urgent cares. Then a parking garage, you have that in Peterson, I don't know.
We've moved on.
Oh, you found it?
Our A, our ADB.
Yep, we're, we're, we're done, you weren't quick enough. Do you think parking garage is okay in Peterson?
Well, for all the workers, when they're taking their, their tram up to West F P.
Well, who, I mean, a parking garage is gonna have to sustain something, right?
There's nothing to sustain there, but that's.
But it takes that into most of those.
Yeah.
Yeah, where are you gonna get your money?
Exactly.
You can make them pay, pay to park there.
Yeah, but you, you'd have to charge so much money to take care of what it costs you to build that.
I know.
Nobody ever parks in there, it'd cost you a hundred bucks an hour.
My last, on the last page, you have tractor farm and construction equipment repair. You can do automotive repair in so many zones, but is there a reason tractors only allowed in, is it because of the size of the machine?
Well, I think that was part of it, was because of the size of the equipment, that we moved it to light manufacturing or industrial because of what you're dealing with, it wasn't just.
See, maintenance service.
Wasn't your just typical farm tractor that was.
That's a lot of residential, we, we love it.
We have maintenance services, I mean, Heinz does maintenance on tractors, so I.
We did a condition use for Mountain Green, the residential zone, the same thing.
I know. Right, no, it's okay.
And it, and it's a good fit.
Any questions on any of the definitions?
Just the bakery discussion, right?
They're just the, just the flipping of the, the bakeries.
And then the drinking places, I think we need to have, we will likely have more discussion at public hearing on that.
What was their issue with cookies and crackers, by the way?
So, so we do need to fix that for.
Yeah, just.
The what?
Cookies and crackers.
Yeah, cookies and crackers.
Really accept cookies.
But pies and cakes are fine.
Yeah.
They definitely have got a reason.
There, there is.
Oh, you need that sign.
They've been affecting recently, they've got it.
So you go to a gas station, there's a reason the sign says.
Some lobbyist got hold of them.
Suck on the end of the nozzle.
What if you're making pretzel crackers, are those pretzels or crackers?
Or are they crackers?
Cracker maybe two thousand.
Uh, anything else? We're gonna have to go through this one more time anyway. Okay? So if you got all those notes, we can close our, our discussion on item number seven, move on to item number eight. Anything for us?
And you're, so we'll advertise we're coming back to the August thirteenth meeting.
Yes, July's a light month. That's in, there's no meetings.
And that is the, yeah, first time in business, there is no meeting on the twenty-third, that is when we're observing the primary day holiday.
Oh, re-observing it.
It's twenty-third.
Oh, I have new meetings.
The county is observing it on Thursday.
There's no events.
Um, let's see. Last meeting. I think we're going on pretty good and.
We were, we were talking about maybe getting, uh, the new ombudsman.
Yes, I saw the note that I was supposed to have them at this meeting.
Just wanna keep it on the table. There might be something good towards the end of the summer, get them in, get a refresh.
To pick one of the two meetings in August if they were available.
Cool. Okay, any other questions for staff? No? All right, everybody get their notes in for the minutes from last meeting?
Can we approve the minutes as amended from the last meeting?
Oh, I can't do that, can I? I was in the air.
You can still make it. It doesn't matter.
My motion stands.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Would you second?
Shane did.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
She could've waited five more minutes.
So what have you been doing with your free taste of socialism? It's our free, it's our free trial of socialism these last like four months or so.
As scary as they don't seem to wear them. Seattle.
That was, I saw a really great meme talking about, you remember when Bloomberg said he could teach anybody to farm?
Oh, yeah.
And then, uh, it's like here all the people went to Bloomberg's farming school and showed that garden that they tried to plant in Seattle.
Yeah.
Did you see the gardens?
At the top, yeah. They threw dirt on grass.
They did, yeah, they didn't till it.
They didn't till it, they just threw some dirt on the grass. They're like, ew, turd.
They were growing pot and a few, and a few things that you couldn't identify.
Yeah, there was a pot.
Everybody knows you can only grow pot in underground, sealed in containers, so.
I heard a report tonight where they were requiring a police force to go to a session where people would actually scream in their face, make them sensitized to what a lot of people go through. Imagine that? I can't. I've had so many discussions of this, I'm gonna opt out.
Yeah, at a certain, yeah, you burn out on it, it's like, and it's, and it's Groundhog Day, you know, every day, it's like, okay, got it.
Is, are we recording stuff?
Yeah, we're still on.
They heard his doggy got chas. I was gonna, I was gonna send you two some stuff on, on Chaz's planning commission that they were setting up, like if you guys.
Were they?
No, of course, are you kidding?
I thought maybe.
Maybe it was a good experiment, you know?
They only had like six blocks, you know, I was hoping to like, you know, become a warlord up there or something, but, you know.
There's plenty of opportunities outside the city, up in the mountains for that.
Can we do like a Morgan County Autonomous Zone?
You pretty much have that.
It's called Morgan.
Yeah, it's called Morgan County.